Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. Board members, all board members are present, so therefore we have a call. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Nothing.
Ms. Luckett has approved, has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for May 5th, 2020?
So madam chair, I also move.
A second.
Mr. Figures has moved and Dr. Sebeck has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. And now we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Green.
Okay. Good evening, board members. President Johnson, all of our board members, all of the administrators and parents, all of those who are joining us virtually for tonight's meeting. Before I begin my prepared remarks, I'd like to take a moment to extend my deepest condolences to the family of longtime Hardy Middle School science teacher. This is Mrs. Mary Welch, who passed recently. Mrs. Welch was a historical figure, pretty middle school, and as a valued member of the Hardy family, she'll be sorely missed. And so we ask that everyone please keep her family and friends and loved ones and your thoughts and prayers as they deal with this difficult loss. And at this time, I'll invite our video presentation, the latest district news and important updates from our instructional television production team.
Jackson Public Schools will celebrate the class of 2020 with graduation ceremonies at the Mississippi Veterans Memorial Stadium. JPS will record the commencement exercises and the awarding of diplomas at the stadium. We will showcase the event via virtual broadcast on Comcast Channel 19 and online on our Facebook and YouTube channels. The graduations will air May 26th and May 27th. In compliance with federal CDC and local health guidelines and in prevention of the spread of COVID-19, the district will follow safety measures and recommendations during the recording of each graduation ceremony. Please visit our website to read more about our JPS virtual graduations, schedules, and air dates. Congratulations, 2020 scholars, and we look forward to celebrating this momentous occasion with you. Jackson Public Schools extends special gratitude to Woodward Heinz Education Foundation and their Get to College initiative for helping to celebrate our 2020 scholars. The organization donated a yard sign to each 2020 JPS graduate. The beautifully decorated signs commemorate each scholar's special graduation milestone. A total of 1,511 signs were designed, printed, and delivered to each JPS high school, where seniors picked up their signs along with their caps and gowns. Thank you once again to Woodward Heinz Education Foundation for their generous donation to our scholars. As JPS educators continue to provide instruction to scholars through mini lessons during school closures, the popularity of these classes has made local news. WJTV Channel 12 featured the district's mini lessons in its Cool School segment, a weekly series that highlights central Mississippi schools. The mini lessons taught by JPS educators offer students the option of studying either English, math, or science while sheltering in place at home. Students with internet access can stream the courses online. Those without cool internet access can watch the programs on our Comcast public access channels 18 and 19. The mini lessons were produced by the JPS Instructional Television Department and the district's Office of Teaching and Learning. Thanks, WJTV, for helping to share our continuing efforts to educate our scholars. JPS educators have logged more than 1.3 million engagements between schools and parents. For this spectacular achievement, School Status, a data analytics platform for K-12 school districts, awarded the educators with a donation of 10 Chromebooks. School Status provides actionable student data and communication tools for parent engagement. Please visit our website to read more and to see the schools recognized for the most engagements per student. Jackson Public Schools will serve grab-and-go breakfast and lunch meals during school closures through Wednesday, May 20th. Meals will be served from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Monday and Wednesdays each week. Children 18 years of age and under will be able to pick up these meals. No ID is required. Adult meals are $2.50 for breakfast and $3.75 for lunch. Online registration is underway for the 2020-2021 school year for returning JPS students. Parents and legal guardians must have two proofs of residency in their names. For families of returning students with no address change, the Mississippi Department of Education has waived the two proofs of residency requirement. This is only for returning students with no address change. New students or returning students whose addresses have changed are required to prove residency. Field boxes may not be used and utility bills must be within 30 days. For more information, please log onto our website and click the district's Active Parent Portal. Welcome to our new school principals. The Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees approved five new principal appointments for the 2020-2021 school year. They are Joseph Collins, Boyd Elementary School; Lisa Haddon, Oak Forest Elementary School; Dr. Anthony Moore, Casey Elementary School; Dr. Kashir Rankin, Power APEC Elementary; and Dr. Shautel Richardson, Van Winkle Elementary School. Please visit our website to read more about our district's new education leaders. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and to stay informed about the district's coronavirus response, please visit jackson.k12.ms.us/coronavirusresponse. You may also contact us with your COVID-19 related questions at covid19@jackson.k12.ms.us.
As always, I want to thank our instructional television team, production team, and of course to Dr. Cormac for his master skills at coordinating and quarterbacking during our virtual meetings here. Thank you to all for their work on those wonderful highlights. In January 2020, I was asked to take part in a photo shoot with all of the high school misses, the high school queens. Ms. Jim Hill, Rihanna Russell, created what she called the Unity Project, because she wanted to bring unity to all of the JPS high schools, and many of them have this rivalry type of thing. And so she wanted to bring a bit of unity to the schools through this project. The fact that we would later be separated by the COVID-19 pandemic made the reveal of the photos of this photo shoot that much more special to me. And I'm extremely proud to have participated in this project with these lovely young ladies. But I'm even more excited to announce that every Miss JPS is ranked amongst the 20, or the top 20 scholars of their class. Ms. Lanier, Zakiya Crisler is ranked number one in her class. Ms. Callaway, Ariana Reddick is ranked number three, and she's also part of the Superintendent Advisory Council. Ms. Jim Hill, Rihanna Russell is ranked number four. Ms. Murrow, Asia Clay is ranked number six. Ms. Provine, Janasia James is ranked number six. Ms. Wingfield, Jasmine Lott is ranked seven. She too is on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. And Ms. Forrest Hill, Sydney Howard is ranked number 19. Congratulations to all of these amazing young ladies representing your schools and our district with such poise and achievement. So very proud of those young ladies. As we continue our efforts to build and sustain a strong and talented team in support of our strategic plan, I'm excited to announce two new executives who will be joining Team JPS. The first is Dr. Jose Salgado, who will serve as our Chief Academic Officer. Dr. Salgado will lead the teaching and learning team, the school leadership team, along with the assistant attendants. He will help to ensure equity amongst all of our learners and those who have identified special needs, those who are English language learners, and those who are advanced scholars and those who are struggling a bit. Expanding the reach of our programs and increasing outcomes for scholars, of course, falls under his purview. Leading the charge in building and implementing an expanded virtual learning program. And obviously, that's something that we're all so very focused on. Also excited to have his leadership and his expertise in that area. And as well, increasing our efforts to truly prepare our scholars to compete in the world. This whole idea of globalization. And Joseph Albright will serve as our Chief Operations Officer. He will be supporting, of course, our bond program and all of the work there, ensuring customer satisfaction. It's both in, external customers around all of the operations, functions of the district, creating greater efficiencies across our operations. And so looking at our budgets and looking at the utilities and just all of the ways that we have to spend our limited resources and ensuring that we are most efficient with those. And then assuring and ensuring that our team members and scholars have the necessary conditions for great success. And so we're very excited to be welcoming both Dr. Salgado and Mr. Albright to the team. We're just over the moon with their experiences and the spirit with which they're bringing and joining our teams. And so just very, very excited to have them. And now, with the shift to learning at home that we've had to do here, obviously, at the end of the 1920s school year, we are excited to share with you our planning and our thinking about summer learning and some digital experiences that we'll be providing to young people over the course of the summer. As you know, we are not a one-to-one district meeting. We do not have a program that's established where each scholar has their own device for their learning. But we are working to ensure that scholars continue, well, we work to ensure their learning towards the, over the end of the school year, and continuing that work and that planning over the summer and into the next, into the fall. We've also started to think about how to provide instruction for scholars over the summer using some technology in ways that will set them up for greater success into the fall and the 2021 school year. At this time, I'm inviting our interim Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Kimberly Smith, to join us and share our plan for summer learning. Dr. Smith?
Great evening. Give me just a minute to share my screen. Again, great evening to Board President Johnson, other members of the board, to Superintendent Green, and to all of our participants that's joining us in on the call. So the purpose of this update is to discuss our 2020 summer learning opportunities. Again, as Dr. Green stated, I am Dr. Kimberly Smith, the interim Executive Director for the Office of Teaching and Learning. So we will begin with an overview of the program. And so we will have a couple of programs running simultaneously this summer. And so our first program will be our Summer Boost Program. And it is, the purpose is to engage our pre-K through 11th grade scholars in critical thinking activities that will remediate, enrich, and accelerate skills needed to be successful for our 2021 school year. Our JPS program is for our seniors that need to meet graduation requirements. So our next slide basically discusses our schedule that we will use. So our programs will run from June 1st to June 30th. Our elementary program is from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and middle and high school will engage from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. On Mondays, we will offer independent study activities and project-based learning. Tuesdays through Thursdays, students will engage with direct lessons from our teachers that have been selected to teach summer school. And on Fridays, students will have an opportunity to engage in virtual field trips and exploration. In order to prepare for the start of the program, again, in May 26th, we will have computer distribution and a test run to make sure that connectivity is, there won't be any glitches with connectivity and any login informations that students have to use to login will be accurate. May 29th, our teachers will prepare for the program by participating in the teacher professional development session to help discuss the expectations and the format for the summer learning program. And our students that, our seniors that meet graduation requirements by the end of the, end of the summer will graduate in a summer commencement to be held on June 30th. So our Summer Boost learning curriculum will incorporate the following components: grade levels and content vocabulary, opportunities for self-paced and teacher-led lessons, real-time feedback to students, opportunities for virtual field trips and explorations, differentiation of content, and support for all learners. The purpose of this slide is to compare what we're doing this year versus what we've done in the past. For the past three years, our estimated student participation was about 1,500 students or less. And this year, we have actually targeted one-third of our population that will give us a projected enrollment in the summer program from about 5,000 to 8,000 students. And the purpose of the third of our population is because we know that currently on hand, we have enough devices to enable each one of our participants to have a device for the program. So we use a different selection process for participation. In the past, we focused on our third grade students that were not meeting the Literacy-Based Promotion Act requirements. And this year, we're focusing on opening up for our pre-K through 11th grade scholars. For middle school students, in the past, we focused on students that may have failed core courses. And our high school students, we focus on students that may have failed core courses, but also needed to meet graduation requirements through credit recovery. So we wanted to really ramp up this year with a robust learning program to combat any learning loss that may have been lost from March up until May for the last fourth term. But also, too, to offer options for our high school students with summer boosts, our ninth through 11th grade scholars. And again, our summer school program will be offered for our seniors. In the past, our curriculum and platform was more traditional test preparation, a lot of activity sheets. But this year, we're working on using a virtual platform that will help to also increase critical thinking skills. So our selection for this program, again, will impact one-third of our population. And the students were selected based on data that we gathered, that the schools gathered from report card grades, third-time benchmark data, and the one-star screening results from K through 10th grade students. And schools identify students that met the following requirements as well. Students that were currently failing, ill, late, and are mad. Students identified in our promising 25%, which includes our Tier 2 and Tier 3, which includes some of our EL and our EE students. And students that are proficient and advanced, but may have experienced regression due to the extended closure. So this year, we're not just focusing on students that need remediation, but we're focusing in students that appear in every tier, Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. So how will we communicate with our virtual summer program this summer? Our summer school staff will notify parents of student selection, request for parents to complete a statement of commitment, and provide weekly parent communication regarding students' progress and attendance. We do understand that working together with our students is a partnership, and we believe that the statement of commitment will further engage parents in understanding the importance of their child participating in the program. And also, we want to host a parent engagement opportunity to better help parents understand how virtual instruction is delivered and expectations for their children are set. So some of our virtual assurances that we will offer this summer. Students will receive real-time support, a one-to-one device format, which we're navigating now through the distribution process, self-paced lessons, English language support, SPED support, related services support, which is our occupational therapist and our physical therapist, and then continuous parent communication. We do want to lift up that we are working to make sure that students are connected to ensure they will be able to engage in the program. Efforts that are being made, the district has worked diligently to collect information through surveys, technology surveys, to get a better understanding, the percentage of parents that may need a device and/or connectivity. And then we also come during school, as schools are making calls, we're confirming their needs through actual contact with parents at homes. Other summer learning opportunities as of today. So we'll also have our Extended School Year program is for our ESY, is our ESY for our SPED students. And this program is for students with disabilities, and they were selected by their IEP committees based on performance of IEP goals throughout the school year. Again, we have our summer school for seniors. We have JPS Bridge programs that will take place from July 13th to July 24th. And mostly, this involves our middle schools, middle schools, as well as our high schools, for incoming sixth grade students and incoming ninth grade students to help with transition and from one area to the next. We also have two community partnerships that are currently being developed. One is with Davis-C Planetarium with a virtual STEAM program. Then they have asked for assistance from one of our science teachers. And another community partnership is our Ex-Form Arts Program with visual art lessons. And we're also working on a date for that to begin. Are there any questions?
I've got one. Will students have the ability to use their own device?
Yes, ma'am, they will. We will, that's one of the reasons why the summer school staff is checking with the parents to see who has a device so that we can ensure that their connectivity at home and their device will support the programs that's being ran this summer.
Thank you. The presentation was really well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have questions as well. And by the way, I agree, this was a really informative and well-done type presentation. In the past, there's been a lot of emphasis placed on summer reading. Is that, are we still going to promote that?
Yes, sir. One of the components on Mondays, one of the hours during, well, Tuesdays through Thursdays is when we're there, have the teacher-led lessons. And so part of the ELA instruction on those teacher-led days will be geared directly toward the summer reading books. And so that students will know that students will really have engaged in the required reading because students will go through the books with their students. They will assign pages for them to read, have a discussion, and do different type of activities with them with those books across the summer.
And are there plans to continue to publish the reading logs and those materials?
Yes, sir. They're currently being updated. And so the goal is to have, with our office, is to have everything published and ready to go by June 1st.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The website has already been updated, and we've removed the logs to update them. And then we'll publish them back for virtual, making parents have access to them by printing them off the website.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. That was one of my questions, because often I hear from the church community that these are projects that they would like to somehow support over the summer, helping students read. And I know they can't do anything in person, but I'm glad to know you'll let us know when what is out there for partners who want to help can reach out to you and your team through the website.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Board members, are there any other questions right now for Ms. Smith, or Dr. Smith, regarding summer learning? Well, if there are none other for her, thank you again, Dr. Smith. As you've already highlighted, and I'll just underscore, we know that there are both challenges for some of our scholars and families around the devices as well as connectivity. And so that's something that we're continuing to understand exactly, the situation that each of the scholars and their families find themselves in, and working to ensure that we have some kind of workaround for that. Again, just thank you, Dr. Smith, and to the entire team for leading and exhibiting the core values of equity, excellence, and the growth mindset as we've kind of thought through and developed this plan. So to close and take any questions that you might have, board members, just a final few thoughts. This outbreak of the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic has shifted the old mindset of how the nation, how the world really does school, how we do K-12 school. And though this pandemic has created some uncertainty, it is also an opportunity for us to innovate. And it's obviously a huge cost that we've paid, but as we try to see any kind of a silver lining, it's an opportunity to really rethink how we've behaved and how we've led and how we've served our children and families. I've received several calls and emails and even text messages, and folks who've stopped me in stores or elsewhere, just all asking the same million-dollar question. What are you going to do when it's time to reopen schools? And I have to tell you that I don't have the, all the answers to that question. No one does. And while there are plenty of suggestions and lots of folks who are sharing their opinions and there's some guidance, quote-unquote, that's being shared by several organizations and individuals, largely from the health and safety standpoint, but rarely with any real thought to the logistics behind any of the practices or shifts that we might make in response to the pandemic. And so while I don't have the answer and there's no playbook out there, I have no intention of developing our plan without the input and the engagement, deep engagement of our community. And for that reason, I've established the Safely Reopening Schools Advisory Committee. And this committee is made up of parents of some of our scholars, JPS team members, of course, and other community members and board members. While there's no blueprint for reopening of schools, the advisory committee will be tasked with the following: helping to identify and to name and lift up the community concerns, the things that folks are really most concerned about and ideas and thoughts about that. Making thoughtful and realistic recommendations, and also helping us to identify the resources that might be needed to help us to safely reopen our schools for the 2021 school year. I'm confident, members, I'm confident that Jackson Public Schools will develop a plan to provide safe and meaningful learning opportunities and experiences for our scholars during this unprecedented time. While we don't have all of those answers right now, right here, I am confident that together with what our mayor often says, the collective genius of our community, that we will be able to develop a plan that supports us, meets our children's needs, and is also realistic, given the challenges that families will find themselves in when we get to move into the fall. And so with that, I want to thank you for your time and your attention. And I'll take any questions or comments that you might have on any number of the items that I've shared. And I'll take any questions or comments that you might have on any number of the items that I've shared.
Dr. Green, I want to extend my personal thanks to you and the team members that created the graduation experience. It was seamless. And more importantly, I felt like my daughter was safe. So it meant a lot to us. And, you know, I just wanted to extend my family's gratitude.
Thank you, President Johnson. And I have to tell you, Lekeisha Marshall-Thomas, our Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, and all of our high school leaders and their teams. Such smart people. I could not have come up with the plan that they came up with. So I was so, so proud when they came forward with the plan. You should have heard the other principals on a weekly call that we have with our principals as they celebrated the high school team just for their innovation and the heart. All of the heart and thoughtfulness that went into their planning. So huge kudos to the entire high school division. And even as I shared with them, while I didn't get many, I got a handful of emails. And actually, a little more than a handful because I got a handful from one person. But so a little more than a handful of emails with, with real concerns about the, the plans that we'd shared and feeling like they were too impersonal. I've gotten so many other messages and forwarded messages from folks who thanked us for, for what we've done and, and recognized the challenge and, and really spent the time celebrating their young people and are poised, and I want to be very clear, are poised to celebrate with their young people when they actually graduate, which is next week. It's the 26th and 27th. 26th and 27th. Those are the actual, those are the formal graduation ceremonies. And so, but even as we're recording this week and there, the young people, the graduates have their caps and gowns on and parents have an opportunity to take pictures with them and with the administrators from the school. We, we heard the, the feedback. And so really it was Sunday, I believe, that the, the principals regrouped and added another piece in response to some of the feedback that we got. So thank you to all of the parents who've engaged with us. Thank you to everyone for your understanding and your patience. And most importantly, thank you to our scholars who just continue to amaze us and demonstrate that they are worthy of nothing but the best. And so we appreciate them and appreciate this opportunity to serve them. Any other questions or comments, board members, for me?
Additionally, I have one other thing. It also, and I, we discussed this earlier, it also made me feel much better about when we are back in building. Because the team exhibited very thoughtful procedures and processes for keeping children safe. And it looked like all the scholars, they follow the rules, the parents follow the rules. And so it, it goes a long way to say that we can potentially next semester at some point, if schools are open. Take care of our children.
Agreed. You know, obviously, as I said, there's a lot more thinking and planning. And I'm sure there'll be many, many more developments and an evolution of this whole pandemic and our societal. Just kind of where we are as a society and our thinking about and our readiness to reengage. So, so I appreciate that. We're, we're definitely intending on, on maintaining the adherence to the, the guidance of the, the health professionals. And so with that, just want to thank you again for your time this evening. Thank you to all the team members who've just continued to go above and beyond. I'm every with these smart folks. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And now we are moving on to public comment. Community members who would like to participate in publicly comment should email their request to r o s. Williams at jackson.k12.ms.us no later than 5:15 p.m. Or log into the Zoom meeting between 5:00 and 5:15 to indicate their desire to comment. Tonight, we do not have any individuals that would like to participate. Board members, we also have no discipline classes to review, so we are moving on to information items only. We have a new item on the agenda. It is board member reports. We will start with Dr. Seback and sort of rotate around as if we were sitting in the boardroom. If that works for all of you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Johnson, for the introduction. I will provide, be providing an update from the finance committee. So just some quick background, the finance committee is a three person committee. I am the chair. I serve on this committee with Ms. Hilliard and Mr. Figures, who have both been active members. The committee is staffed by both Dr. Green and Ms. Miller, our CFO for the district. And really, the goal of the committee is to provide oversight and governance of J P S administration in the development and implementation of an annual budget that both aligns with our core values and our shared commitments, which we've communicated in our strategic plan, Excellence for All. So our last meeting was held on April 29th, about three weeks ago, and we discussed a number of topics. The first thing that folks should know is that a review is underway with the Office of the State Auditor. This was anticipated and scheduled. And this is actually a good opportunity to remind board members that Ms. Miller sent us an email to turn in the required disclosure forms that were, were sent out. These are due Friday and need to be dropped off downtown. But again, this was expected and it's underway. The other big topic that we discussed was 2020, 2021 budget planning. So some highlights in regards to budget planning include, starting on the revenue side. You know, we anticipate a flat Avalor request for district maintenance. You know, so effectively that means local property tax collections to support district operations will be similar to last year. No tax increase for residents of the city of, of Jackson is anticipated. A reduction in revenue from 16 section leases. Again, there are fewer leases and there are some large leases that are not being renewed. We'll see a drop in revenue there. Obviously, our funding, our state funding is tied to enrollment. And we are projecting that we will experience a reduction in enrollment. And the other large decrease that we are projecting will be in our state funding formula. Again, you know, with the effects of the COVID-19 outbreak on state revenue collections, they are down. We are anticipating that there will be less money in the state budget to fund a variety of services, including education. And we will have to adjust our budget accordingly as the state legislature adjusts, adjusts its budget. So the reality is on the revenue side is that we will have somewhere between a seven and $10 million less. We will have seven to $10 million dollars less this year. At least at this point, these numbers could change. We're getting new information every day. But right now, less this year than last year to fund our budget. On the expense side, so we're reviewing staffing and we are really doing this with an eye on how we balance strategic investments in our team across the entire district to both promote the retention of top talent and position our students to succeed. We are also projecting charter school enrollment to increase fairly significantly. And again, anticipate that the expenditure here will be roughly one and a half million dollars up from last year based on the enrollment trends. So all of these realities mean we're going to have a very tight budget this year. The committee has provided guidance, the administration review, all options available to build a budget that meets these three goals. One, that increases student achievement. Two, that maintains top talent. And three, is of course balanced. So we are working, our next steps for the committee is to meet in a work session to discuss the plan for the 2021 school year budget with the target for adopting the budget for the next year on June 16th. So with that, President Johnson, I'm happy to entertain any questions. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Seback. Are there any questions, board members? There being none, then the next report would be Ms. Hilliard.
Ms. Johnson, one quick note. I just did give a shout out of thanks to Ms. Miller, who provided a lot of the data that I used in this report. So again, Ms. Miller, thank you for all you do and for the prep that went into getting this report ready for sharing with both of the board and the public.
Absolutely. Now we are ready for Ms. Hilliard.
Good evening. Did I unmute myself? Can you hear me, Latisha?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you. I am, I will be giving a report on the activities of the Council of Great City Schools. And this is an organization that is made up of 76 urban school districts. And of course, Jackson Public Schools is part of that group. Dr. Green and I represent the, the district in regards to that. It is an organization that is keeping us pretty busy right through now. Because we meet, the representative, representatives meet every Friday at noon. And we're supposed to meet from 12 to 1:00, but generally it is 12 to 1:30 or 1:45. But all in all, it's a very informative time that we spend together talking about basically the same kinds of things that are going on in the district here in Jackson. Interestingly enough, we see those same things happening all over the U.S. A good example of that has to do with the charter school situation, you know, and the effect, the charter school, the negative impact, I guess I would say, the negative impact that the charter schools are having on the public schools all over everything there. We are informed of regarding the education things that are going on in Congress. For example, we were, we had a session that involved each of the, the the CARES project, the Money in the CARES project. And of course, we were informed last week of what the HEROES project there, we were informed about that. And of course, it's, well, HEROES project. It is Health and Economic Recovery Emergency Solutions Act. And of course, it's a lot of figures that are here. And I guess these figures are something that Ed would need to deal with. So he's the figure man on the board. But that information is available where I can get to each of you that would like to have a copy of that. We can give you a copy of that information there. One other thing, H A, and of course, I think we're all familiar with him. Did an interview that has been published in the Education Week magazine. And of course, we were, we were, we were told that it was something that would be interesting to read. He's a smart guy, very interested in, knows all about this kind of stuff and everything, you know. But one of the things that he said in conjunction with the Teacher Week statement that he said in that article, he says, "Teachers have always been amazing. And the more hardships our students face, the more apparent that becomes. Teachers are a gift to our nation, our nation and our nation's children. All of us, not just board members, should be expressing gratitude for their commitment at every opportunity." I thought that was such a relevant statement in light of all that we see students, the teachers are doing in, in connection with our students. And I thought about that especially, Dr. Green, when you were talking about the work, the, all of the principals did in relation to the graduation and that kind of thing. And they are, teachers are doing an exceptionally great job. And I think it's just important that every chance we get that we say thanks to them and express our appreciation all of the time to them. Well, you know, we talk about so much there and you know, I was thinking in terms of, you know, now what, what should I include here? But I want to mention something that just happened yesterday. We were, we were involved in a webinar. I think Mr. Figures, I think Mr. Figures may have been on this webinar also, but this was.
Yes, I was.
You were? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so you can help me out a little bit here. This was the webinar, Issues in Urban Education webinar, which they do, this organization does these webinars. And of course, this one had to do with the new regulations for Title IX. And the recommendation is that every board member needs to be familiar with what is in this new regulation, which is supposed to go into effect on, I believe it's the 14th of August that it's supposed to be, supposed to go into effect. Lot of information that is there that could keep us out of a lot of trouble and everything and things of that nature. So it's quite, it's quite informative. And as I said, we meet every Friday at 12 o'clock. If you're interested in getting on, you know, just let me know and I will give you the information to do that. And one other thing that I need to mention is that the, the, the organization and I mentioned Dr. Green, we meet separately there. But the organization did a resolution calling for additional funding for education. And of course, there were 62 superintendents who signed this resolution. And Dr. Green, of course, was one of the 62 persons to sign this resolution that was sent to Congress and the national, national media also got this information up here. Districts are encouraged to send out press releases and letters to our congressional district. You know, we know that this HEROES Act, we know that the House has passed this. But they say where the hangup is, is in the Senate. And we're encouraged to contact our congressional districts and tell them the. and tell them, try to convince them to get on board. I think it's about, no, it told me, I think, two or three minutes. And so that's it, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. I have been on a couple of those calls and they are really informative, really, really informative. So now we are, are there any board members? Are there any questions on Ms. Hilliard's report? Being then, we are ready for Dr. Harrison.
Thank you so much, Attorney Johnson. I'm reporting on the Policy Review Committee with Dr. Robbie Luckett and yourself, Attorney Johnson, as well as other staff members that I will mention in my remarks. Since this board was seated in November 2017, one of our goals was to update our board policy to better achieve our purpose as a public school district. Since that time, the Policy Review Committee has examined and/or revised our board policies in a more systematic manner to achieve this goal. The addition of Dr. Cormac to our Policy Review Committee has improved the forward motion of our work. The Policy Review Committee appreciates the senior leadership team who forwards to us those policies about which they agree need most needed attention, especially as a policy may impact the progress of our scholars. We are grateful for the JPS legal team who participate with us at each meeting and to our board attorney, Dorian Turner, who makes sure that all of our policies and procedures that come to the board for review pass legal muster. Of course, we are grateful for Dr. Green's leadership and input as he too participates fully in these monthly Policy Review Committee meetings. I'd like to outline just four broad areas of the work that we've accomplished over the last two and a half, three years. During 2018 and 2019, the Policy Review Committee contributed to the development of the CAP report by working with Dr. Merritt and his team to be sure our board policies reflected best practice, especially as any weaknesses that might have been identified by the Mississippi Department of Education and our CAP accreditation standards. We improved the language of the board's policies website to provide more clarity and transparency to the public regarding the text and status of each board policy that comes before the board. At our September 2019 board retreat, we began our work to examine and better align our board policies with our five-year strategic plan. And as my colleague Ms. Hilliard has mentioned, the Policy Review Committee, since the beginning of 2019 and through this year, we have been engaged with a very talented member of the Council of Great City Schools who has assisted the Policy Review Committee to systematically examine the manner by which we reflect our mission, vision, and core values in the policies that we develop. This process has included intensive interviews with each board member, written questionnaires, as well as the council staff has viewed our JPS board meetings to gather additional data regarding our success at meeting the needs of our scholars as identified in our vision and mission. He really has challenged us and we have welcomed his challenge to ensure that our policies and procedures and practices do lift up what is in our vision and mission and core values. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May 27, from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m. And thank you for this opportunity to update the board. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, Jean. But one, one thing that I did forget to mention is that during the webinar, it is strongly recommended that you look at your policies in regards to this. Check the policy that we have now to make sure that it is in line with the new guidelines regarding the Title IX regulations.
Thank you for bringing that to our special attention. I'm imagining it will come up on our agenda from our senior leadership team on the May 27 meeting. But thank you for identifying that as something that we really need to attend to.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. No, there being no questions, we are ready for Dr. Luckett.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. I would say that the work of the special committee that I've been chairing in the light of the coronavirus has depended almost entirely upon the good work of Ms. Thea Faulkner and the Office of Partners in Education, and particularly supporting their work to make, yes, thanks. I see the applause for the team there. And I will say I'm deeply grateful for them and their commitment. As I have said to this board and to members of our community in light of the coronavirus, I am as much concerned about the delivery of the social services our children and our students receive from our schools and from our school district as I am about the instructional services. I think they go hand in hand and they're part and parcel of the same thing that we're trying to do, especially in terms of when we think about our strategic plan and our core values in terms of equity, excellence, relationships, positive respect of culture, the ability to make sure that our children have the services as much as possible in this unprecedented time is something that, that I was happy to play some small part of. But I'm very glad to report that Partners in Education and Ms. Faulkner's office has been able to rise to the challenge and thus far has been successful in raising support and sponsorship for an array of activities from feeding programs, both our daily feeding programs as well as weekend and evening feeding programs for students, to a major project just to deliver instructional packets to students. We think about the digital divide in our communities. And of course, in Mississippi and in Jackson, that is a very real tangible issue. There may be parts of this country that assume the ubiquity of technology, but we all know that our children don't all have access to technology, to internet, to Wi-Fi. And so even being able to deliver instructional packets required the printing of hundreds of thousands of documents of the delivery of them to children. And the fact that we've been able to develop community partners and work through Ms. Faulkner's office to see those delivered to children this year as we're now wrapping up the school year is a great testimony to the hard work that they've put in and to, to the commitment of our partners in the community and to the team here. And so with that, we're looking towards the summer and what we can continue to do for our children, what we can continue to build on. But I'm proud of the work that's been done so far. And I will be happy to field what questions I can and also, you know, rely on Ms. Faulkner and our team and Partners in Education to talk more about the very direct work they're doing in that regard.
Board members, are there any questions to Dr. Luckett? There being none, that is one of the, also the things that I am proudest of, that I can say that our district did for our kids. It is a huge display of our commitment, not only to our children, but also to our community. And I thank you, Dr. Luckett, for taking that on. Now we're ready for Mr. Figures.
Madam President Johnson, fellow board members, Superintendent Dr. Green. There are many things in this life I have to be thankful for. When I take inventory, how my list would be the opportunity for me to serve with this board, with this group of insightful and visionary thought leaders. In addition, I'm also thankful for the opportunity to observe the development and implementation of the Excellence for All Jackson Public Schools Strategic Plan 2019 to 2024. This Jackson Public School Superintendent, Dr. Eric Green, through this five-year plan, has demonstrated his commitment to developing a model of what public education could and should be: revelent, innovative, equitable, and excellent. It has been a long-held belief among many advocates, activists, as well as people in general who care about public education, that when students, parents, teachers, administrators, and the community at large work together, the results or outcomes will be excellence for all scholars. This benefits the community and makes communities strong. Strong people make strong communities. Strong communities make strong cities. Strong cities make strong states, nations, and together produce a better world based on inclusion, equity, and justice. In keeping with this five-year strategic plan, Dr. Green has convened an advisory committee, a task force, if you will, with the responsibility of looking at the linear high school feeder pattern and developing within it a joyful learning environment. With this task force, Dr. Green demonstrates that scholars learn better when they are in environments that view, that they view as safe, supportive, and positive. When the, when, with the empaneling of this committee or task force, Dr. Green understands that this means our schools and each classroom must be designed and led in ways that encourage and nurtures the joy of learning, fosters a sense of belonging, builds trusting relationships, and encourages risk-taking and questioning that are essential to lifelong learning. The Linear High School Feeder Pattern Task Force is composed of teachers, building administrators from K through 12, students, parents, as well as community members representing various segments: the faith community, the Linear High School National Alumni Association, the Linear High School All-Class Reunion, businesses, and advocacy. With the empaneling of this task force, I see embedded within it a strong start, innovative teaching and learning, talented and empowered teams, and a culture of accountability and excellence. I am thankful for the vision of Dr. Green and the staff of implementation specialists. Facilitating this task force will be Dr. Lakeisha Marshall Thomas. I am reminded of another educational thought leader. In her words, in the words of Dr. Margaret Walker Alexander, in one of her classic works, "For My People", Dr. Alexander has gone from labor to reward now. But if I could call her up and ask her, could I paraphrase her words in the closing of her poem, "For My People", as I think about the potential and possibility that exists in Jackson Public School under the leadership of Dr. Green at this time? At the close of that poem, Dr. Alexander says, "For my people, trying to fashion a better way from confusion, from hypocrisy, from misunderstanding, trying to fashion a world that will hold all of the people, all of the faces, all of the atoms and eaves and their countless generations. Let a new earth rise, let another world be born. And to the board, Superintendent Green, and all of the implementation specialists on every level and all of the heroes today regarding the future of the Jackson Public School system, it does not yet appear what we shall be. If there are any questions, we'll entertain them at this time."
Madam President, I don't have a question, but as Director of the Margaret Walker Alexander Center, I just want to applaud Mr. Figures' reference to Dr. Alexander. Thank you for bringing that into this conversation. I think you're absolutely right. That is, those are the words that we all needed to hear.
Yep, so appropriate, amen. Thank you, Robbie, so appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Figures. This is a wonderful way for us to wrap up our first session of board reports. Thank you so much. Okay, board members, so if there are no other comments, we will be moving on to item B for information-only items. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Green, members of the board, a good evening. I present to you two items, B and C for information-only. Item B is the approval or the review of a lease agreement between Carol's Nursery and Landscaping Company and Jackson Public Schools. Board members, we, the district currently has a 16-section lease agreement with Carol's Nursery for the majority of the parcel that they sit on that is off of Forest Avenue and right behind borders the Lake Haiko area. This parcel in particular had been subleased to them from Entergy. So Entergy had moved out this little portion of this parcel out to Carol's Nursery. And as we've mentioned a couple of times, the lease with Entergy will expire in October. And Entergy has advised the district that they will not continue. So therefore, Carol's Nursery desires to continue, they would like to enter into a direct lease agreement for this parcel with Jackson Public Schools. This parcel will be, the lease amount will be $3,060. And I spoke with Mr. Carol on today. And they're very excited about continuing to stay in the community and stay where they are in the district and would like to present this for your review. So that is item number B, item B, I'm sorry. Are there questions for me? Ms. Johnson, should I go to C?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item C is the review of the award of RFP 2020-01 for depositories for the Jackson Public School District for the next three years. Board members, this is a state requirement that all school districts must bid out their depository agreements every three years. That gives school districts the, actually, the ability to put their dollars in state-approved depositories that have met the requirements of the state as well as have the best interest of the districts at heart in making sure that they are maintaining and positively maintaining and helping to manage school districts on public funds. So this year, we, our current depository agreement with Trustmark National Bank expires on June 30. And so we issued an RFP and we had two responses. The first from Trustmark National Bank and the other from Bank Plus. And currently, we have, our only depository is Trustmark National Bank. We've had a relationship with them for a number of years. In addition to being our depository for our public funds, they are also managing the investment for our $65 million bond issue. We have really enjoyed their relationship. And in the past, or the current agreement with them is for a variable rate. And until COVID-19, we were enjoying some record interest rate earnings. We've seen, as I'm sure you're aware, we've seen, as everyone else has seen, bank interest rates fall dramatically. And the one good thing about the-- And the one good thing about the variable rate is there was a floor of .5, and we did not fall below that floor. But in looking at what the projections are for the recovery of the nation, which may be up to five years before we fully recover, Trustmark is recommending, they offered us a variable rate, but they also offered a fixed rate of .25 for funds held in our checking accounts. And so at this point, we are recommending a .25. I think today, I was in the bank with Trustmark, and the rate on regular checking is .15. So to be able to recommend a .25 fixed rate for the next three years is very good. So we are recommending that we will continue our relationship with Trustmark National Bank with a fixed rate for our deposits there. Additionally, Bank Plus has become one of our other really good partners, and also make, they have really shown some interest in being a partner with the district as well as becoming a depository. While their rate is not as aggressive as Trustmark National Bank, they are a local bank. They have served as good stewards. We did have some funds there in the past. They've shown them to be good stewards of our dollars as well as good community partners. And so we are also recommending that Bank Plus be considered as one of our depositories with a fixed rate of .05%. If this is approved at the next board meeting, we will be looking toward, at every one of our bank accounts, we have almost 200 of them, various bank accounts, that we'll be looking at to strategically place those funds with those banks to make sure that we are maximizing the interest rates and maximizing the earnings to the district. At any given time, we can have upwards around $20 to $22 million sitting in checking accounts. And so we want to make sure that as we do, make sure that we are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, that we also are maximizing our interest earnings. So this is being recommended as well as the lease agreement with Carol's Nursery for information-only tonight, and will be brought back to you at the next board meeting.
Board members, are there any questions?
I do have one question. So Ms. Miller, in the prep materials, I noticed that there was, there was some information provided on the Community Reinvestment Act ratings for the banks. And it did make me wonder if there is an opportunity for us to work with the banks and/or in, not necessarily this process, because this process has already been bid out, but in future processes, to work with or preference banks that have a high satisfactory or outstanding rating. And that, you know, the Community Reinvestment Act was created to encourage reinvestment, frankly, in the communities where our students live. And if there is an opportunity to use our funds to also support financial institutions that score high on those examinations while also maximizing the earnings, I think that's something that we should consider.
I agree, and thank you, Dr. Seback. Both of the primary contacts at both Trustmark and Bank Plus have committed to making sure that they are supportive and increase their support to district schools and the district activities over the next several years. Both have been intimately involved with our schools. They are adopters. Trustmark, I think, was recently one of those that donated $15,000 toward the Feeding Project. And certainly, we don't make decisions based on things that we get for, from any vendor, but we do encourage community support. I would love to see some type of educational swap where students who are interested, because this is my field, of course, students that are interested in finance would be able to spend some time at the banks and learn the inner workings of banks and financial institutions and things of that nature. So I certainly think that there, we certainly will have an opportunity to encourage increased investment in our community and in our school district.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question, Ms. Miller. You said that we had two responses to the RFPs. Is that normal?
That's actually better than usual.
Oh, wow.
We have one, and I actually, we advertised it, of course, and then I actually sent it to banks, local banks here to encourage their participation. And this is, this was the response that we received.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions for Ms. Miller? Being none, then we are moving on to Items D and E. Dr. Green, D, E, and F.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. Board members, presenting for information tonight, Items D, E, and F. Item D, a review of the organizational chart, which would be revised based on your, your action, June 2020. And the organizational chart would, the rationale for this would be to alter the reporting structure of the Office of the General Counsel, to have that office to report to our Chief of Staff, also to revise the title of the Executive Director of State and Federal Programs to support the school support more broadly stated, and altering the reporting structure within the Office of State and Federal Programs to create a Director of State and Federal Programs. So that, that's Item D. Item E is the revision of the job description of the Director of State and Federal Programs. Just want to make sure that, that, that position is such that it supports more broadly across the operations within the department, ensures that all of the funding and lots of compliance, but more than just compliance, that the actions that the office takes in conjunction with, in partnership with MDE, and of course, in partnership with all of our schools, that it's better positioned. And then thirdly, a revision of the job descrip, the current Executive Director of State and Federal Programs revising that, that job description and re-titling as an Assistant Superintendent for. Right now, well, we, we're all already making a shift from more of a compliance and ensuring that we're utilizing our funding, title funding, state and federal funding most appropriately, and aligning it to school improvement plans and supporting schools and school leaders and making smart decisions about those, those funds. But also, the, the scope and the intention is that there's a true partnership and a true alignment between the school leaderships, the school-based leaders, as well as the Assistant Superintendents who manage and support those schools. But we want a stronger and better-aligned partnership between them and this new Assistant Superintendent over school supports. And so envisioning a further and more deeply-aligned build-out of actions that are to be taken and utilizing the available resources, advising and partnering more closely with the principals and making decisions about the use of those resources, really monitoring, and you, Board Members, as you know, you've been calling for, and rightfully so, a much deeper, closer scrutiny of the funds that we utilize to support schools through our various vendors and purchasing of tools, devices, all of those sorts of things, professional development, all of that. And so just acknowledging that the role of the current Executive Director to truly do what we are expecting them to do, we need to reposition and ensure that there's a closer partnership between that office and the resourcing that sits in that office, and the planning and the implementation of those plans around school improvement and school support, that they are better aligned with and partnered with the Assistant Superintendents and the school leaders that sit under them. And so those are the, the three items that we're bringing for your information tonight. Are there any questions?
Dr. Green, I just wanted to comment that it, it's very heartening and exciting to see the organizational chart built out and the direction it's, you're going with your team and how it is aligned with our plans, and, and the revised job descriptions, especially given more support. That, so I'm just very impressed, and I appreciate your sharing with the board the expertise that our two new hires, COO and CAO, bring to this, bring to this work. I think in so many ways, of course, I'd read the materials and had a sense of their talents and expertise, but I appreciate you also sharing some more information regarding how they will add to your leadership team.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Dr. Hairston. Absolutely. Really, and especially, well, not especially, inclusive of these three items here is we're just thinking about how we move from adhering to requirements by the state or the, the federal government, how we ensure that we check the boxes in order to get the resources through title funds and that moving far beyond that to what truly matters to young people and what truly supports our teachers and school leaders as they're doing this work every day. That's far more than, here's a menu of options, choose one, and we'll do the paperwork to support you. That's a much closer partnership. That's us living in schools in ways that we don't always do. And so that's the, the shift that I see happening in that team and really looking forward to, you know, celebrating more and more of that and seeing the fruits of it, the outcomes, because we do it for a reason, for student outcomes. And, and I see, I believe we will see it more and more.
And that work is connected to what Board Member Figgers shared with the Linear Initiative. I mean, it's all coming together, it's all focused, and we're finding ways to support across the district, and that's very exciting.
And yes, absolutely. You know, with, we get a lot of title funding. We got a lot of, of, you know, just based on our size and based on the conditions that many of our children and families find themselves in. But when you look at it and start to, to, you know, allocate those funds across schools and per child, you know, very quickly, you come to the end of those dollars. And so you can't just toss money at issues. We've got to be really, really thoughtful and strategic. And so using the strategic plan and the commitments we've made there, the goals that we've set, aligning all of the school improvement plans and all of our budgeting priorities, all of that to the strategic plan and what we know about our children and families. And again, what we know are some of the needs of our educators. All of those start to come into alignment. Any other questions for me regarding Items D, E, and F, Board Members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And we're on action items, and we have Dr. Green going again.
Sure. And so action item, for information, action item A, it's the job, revised job description for our General Counsel. As I'd mentioned earlier with the info-only items, we're trying to bring to you and give you an opportunity to look at these items and consider them over time as we typically do, one meeting at info and one meeting for action. We're up against a time crunch with this item, though, Board Members, in that we've got to find our new General Counsel. And so to the extent that we really appreciate our, our staff attorneys who are doing a yeoman's job to carry the office and continue all of that work, we do need to start to interview and, and identify the new General Counsel. And so with your approval tonight of this item, it would allow us to post the position and, and start to source the candidates there. Effectively, as I mentioned earlier, what we're asking and proposing here in this new job description is resetting the position and the office under the Chief of Staff. And so the General Counsel would report to the Chief of Staff. A couple of really key reasons why we want to, to do that. One, as you mentioned earlier, as the Chair of the Policy Review Committee, Dr. Hairston, we've got our Chief of Staff positioned as well as the legal team positioned to support policy development, policy revisions, review, all of that, to staff that committee in that way. And so to bring the Counsel under the Chief of Staff, it supports that. It just aligns those efforts. As well, so much of the work that our legal team, in-house legal team does is related to human resources and employees. And so with the Human Resources Office sitting currently under the Chief of Staff, we thought it's smart to marry that, those offices, Human Resources, along with our, our legal. Now, that's not the sum total of the work that they do, but it's so much of it with, you know, contracts related to staffing, any discipline of employees that's there, employee FMLA and Family Medical Leave Act and, shucks, employee, when employees get hurt on the job, I can't think of the term. Anyway, so all of that sitting between Human Resources and Finance to pull them closer together and partner between those. We just see that as a great way to ensure that, workers' compensation, thank you, to ensure that we've got decisions, more timely decisions and that we're formed as we, as we make those decisions. I'll take any questions that you might have with regard to this recommendation for the, the job description for the General Counsel.
Well, thank you, Dr. Green. I think we'll take all of the items at the end, and if Board Members want to questions. So next, we have Ms. Robinson for Items B through F.
Um, I'll take all of those. Ms. Johnson, this is.
Okay.
Um, Items B through F are various construction projects that actually included bids. Item B is the final contract adjustment order for the roof replacement at Lee Elementary School. Lee Elementary had a roof that was damaged during the 2013 hailstorm. And so we have, although the hailstorm is 2013, we did have some extensive litigation and negotiations. That was a, upwards of over $20 million claim that was made on several of our roofs that were damaged. And so Lee Elementary School is one of the last ones, the latter ones that we are getting completed. So this is a change order for $2,164.68 out of the contingency funds that were set aside for this, for this school and this project. There were some latent issues that were not included in the debt work that needed to be done and needed to be changed as the contractor finished the, the project to make sure that the, that the roof was in compliance with current standards and also the current insurance requirements. So Item B is for the approval of that final contract order, which is in addition of $2,164.68, which those funds are included in the contingency for this project and also included in the hailstorm damage fund. Items C, D, E, and F are all 2018 Geo Bond projects. Item C is for the upgrades of the high schools, high school science labs. And I believe Mr. McCracken and Ms. Robinson gave some scheduling of how those will be done and how those will be completed. That approval is, again, to Flagstar Construction Company. Item D is for Green Elementary School improvements, which is going to thrash commercial contractors. Item E is to improve the Boyd Elementary School exterior concrete repairs to PaveCon LTE. And Item F is for the Bond Project at General High School for the gymnasium improvements to Mayrat and Associates LLC. Item G is a 16-section settlement agreement between Metro Tower Services and Jackson Public Schools. Metro Tower, Metro Tower Services has a tower on. Metro Tower, Metro Tower Services has a tower on our sixteen-section property that is on I-20 South Frontage Road behind the hill. And we've had a number of, well, a year or so of negotiations with this company. They, there's, the way the tower leases are set up is that the tower company pays a flat rate for the lease, the initial lease, but then they owe the district a percentage of, based on the number of what we call arrays that are on that tower. So for example, Metro Tower is the host, but they may have an array for AT&amp;T, for Verizon, for track phones, anywhere of that nature. So we had some negotiated, protracted negotiations with this, let's see, and their attorneys and our attorneys in the sixteen-section committee. And so now Metro Tower has agreed to the number of arrays that, that we say that are on the tower. They have also agreed to pay the rent that was due for 2018, 2019, and the additional revenue. And because we actually have the check in hand, and I would like to, again, as Dr. Green says, we certainly want to be respectful of the board and give you time to renew, to review these items. This one is one that we would ask for your approval tonight so that we can do the, conduct this full and final release with Metro Tower as well as make the deposit of the check to pay the funds that are due to the district. It should be noted, though, that Metro Tower does come up for review this year, and we will be very, very clear on how the arrays are counted and moving forward in any type of recommendation for a long-term lease.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions, board members? Ms. Miller, I'd like, um, when we receive funds for the 2013 hailstorm settlement? Could you, am I muted?
You went out on us.
Oh, sorry. When did we receive those settlement funds?
Uh, 2018 is when we received all of them, I believe. We had some initial funds and then we had to go back and we actually had some negotiations in front of a mediator. And so it was 2018, I think, when we received the final amount of those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Miller, and I don't know how I missed this at our last board meeting, but I, will you assure me that I can rest assured that we had some teacher input into our science labs especially? And I know that Dr. Marshall Thomas and-
I believe, I believe Mr. McCracken did indicate at the last-
At the last board meeting.
Yes, ma'am, that he did include teachers on this, on this project.
Good. I thought so, but I just wanted to be sure. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any more questions for board members? Um, thank you, Ms. Miller, and now we'll move on to Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Good evening, everybody. Board President Johnson, board members, and Dr. Green, the administration is recommending an amendment to the current CT3 contract. Due to COVID-19, our current contract is unable to be executed with its current mode of services. As such, the administration is recommending that the remaining days on the job embedded professional development so, the supports be provided virtually, in addition to some onsite throughout the school year. The consultants will facilitate professional development and coaching sessions that continue to address the instructional aid and the leadership needs of our teacher coaches and our school leaders in our schools and in our district. We also ask you that the timeframe be extended to December 31st, 2020. And as of May 1st, we currently have nineteen days, nineteen point ten days left on the contract.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay, there being none. Board members, we've heard action item reports on items A through H. Is there anything that we would like pulled for separate consideration? And if not, is there a motion to approve information to items A through H?
So, President, I move.
I second.
So is that, was that Ms. Hilliard and then Dr. Hairston?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Hilliard has moved and Dr. Hairston has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now, board members, we have gotten to the consent agenda items finance. We've had an opportunity to review previously, either as information only or in other presentations. Are there any questions of the administration? If there are no further questions of the administration, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items finance?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now we have the consent agenda items general. Again, all of the consent agenda items have been presented to the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hairston has moved. Mr. Figur has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now we are on the consent agenda items personnel. Again, we've had an opportunity to review this previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If there are no further questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved and Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. There is a consideration to hold an executive session. So is there a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go into executive session?
Moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved and Ms. Hairston has seconded, Dr. Hairston has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being, there being none, the meeting is now closed for consideration of executive session.
Members, Ms. Miller sent me a note and she wanted to know the budget work session on the 27th. Wanted to do it face-to-face. So I figured we're all together. What, how do folks, we can obviously do it this way, and I'm comfortable doing it this way. So just get the feedback from folks on the-
It helps me understand to have, have a human being to relate to.
He's doing this, this, this-
That's his own way.
Okay, that's what we'll go with. Thank you.
What I wanted to say was to give a shout out to a board member, Dr. Robert Luckett, who hosted a fabulous-
Oh, yes, he did.
With the folks around the murders at Jackson State. It was really good, Robbie, really, really good. We're so proud of your work.
It wasn't what we wanted to do or how we wanted to commemorate it and to do, but we did the best we could. Over eleven thousand views of-
Oh, wow.
Wonderful. That is wonderful.
Yeah. So it was, it was powerful if you saw any of it or a part of it. I wish we could have included JPS more directly in some kind of way. And we do want to in the future when we can do some tangible program in person. Obviously, like everybody else, we don't know when that will be.
Yeah.
We want to honor Jim Green, we want to honor Jim Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The JPS families brought into that.
But that spirit came through, and Galia Porter was amazing. Yeah, I mean, everybody was just so good.
I'm totally down to support and to engage. Would want to make sure that we do that and figure out how.
Well, something will happen, and we did get, after it's a few main letters approved for both James Green and- the, the current administration is committed to having a commencement ceremony when their families are present to receive those.
Good. That's good.
That will be sooner rather than later, but of course, we just don't know when. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else, board members?
I, I've got just a question about the online virtual graduation ceremony this next week. I, I know that it's all planned out. Is there something specific physically we need to do or be a part of it?
You, you can host your own graduation party at your home and wear your capping gown and regalia and-
But we can watch on Facebook?
Facebook, it'll be on the channels, Channel 19, I believe.
Oh, yeah, great.
Yeah.
I'm glad y'all got good feedback on that and how, how you did it. That was great.
Yes.
It will livestream on the YouTube channel, but the nine, Channel 19 would have to be recorded and then not livestreamed, unfortunately, so.
Livestreamed on, on YouTube and on-
Livestream on YouTube.
Good, livestream on YouTube. Good.
Right.
Not JPS, but YouTube. Oh, JPS is YouTube.
We have a JPS ITV channel on YouTube. It'll be there. And then on Comcast channel, but afterward, after the-
Yeah, I want the live.
Yep, there you go. Okay.
Yeah, so I expect to see everybody in their regalia. Watching livestream.
I don't have, I don't have regalia.
Send selfies. I bet Dr. Luckett's got some regalia.
Right.
And I guarantee it too.
Maybe a little large, it would be kind of big on you guys.
All right, board members. Is there anything else?
No. Oh, and I forgot to tell the public, but hush, Dr. Green, hush. I forgot to tell the public. But I decided it might have been too much bragging. But remember, did we share with the other board members how AJ said that this board's collegiality and camaraderie and how we work together is like in the top three percent of all the boards they've ever examined before. I mean, he really gave us a shout out for working well together. So I just wanted to share that. Good. Now, good night. Thank you, Tony Johnson.
Well, I can, can I get a motion?
Oh, so moved. Second.
Um, Ms. Hilliard has moved and Dr. Hairston has seconded. That we adjourn the meeting are all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Good night.
Good night.